Good evening and welcome to the March 2022 Town of Poughkeepsie zoning board of appeals meeting. Could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under the indivisible liberty and justice for all.
All right, Diane?
Okay, I'm here.
Okay, Tony G?
Yes, we are.
Very good. I'm here. Art?
That would be me. I'm here.
Larry?
Here.
Phyllis?
Here.
I can see you waving.
Ari, I'm here.
Yes, you are. Tony S?
Here.
And Simona?
Here.
Okay, we have a full complement tonight unless someone recuses themselves, the alternates, Tony and Simone will not be voting, although there may be one recusal. Diane?
Yes, I'll be recusing myself on number four.
Okay, thank you very much. For those of you unfamiliar with the procedure here at the zoning board of appeals, all testimony, all testimonies sworn under oath. Any applicant has an opportunity to present their application for the, for the variance. We may ask questions from the board. The public is invited to make comments, either people that are in person or on Zoom or by phone. And if there are no questions, I'll bring that to item number one, Stuart Shapps. I make a motion to adjourn that to April 11th. Any discussion on that? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Item two, Diamond Storage, I make a motion to adjourn that until the May 9th meeting.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to item number three, McDonald's Corporation. Is there someone here for that application?
Yes, Matthew Ingber for the applicant.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is, is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay, when we were last here, we were waiting a response from the county that has come in. Have you had an opportunity to review that?
Yes, we have reviewed the county plan letter and we have no objection as to their, to the wall signs. And in respect to the monument sign, we also, in respect to the pylon sign, we have no objection. And as part of the application, we are willing to modify the proposed pylon sign to a proposed monument sign.
Okay, we had some discussions about the availability of using the existing space for the pylon signs that are there now?
Yes, and McDonald's has reached out to the property owner and it's still, it's still uncertain whether they will be able to obtain permission to be included on the existing freestanding sign. So therefore, it's necessary that we seek a variance for a monument sign.
When do you expect this to be open?
I want to defer that question to either Ethan Chakosty, our traffic engineer, or Alex Lemay, our project civil engineer.
I can answer that question for the board, just as a, I don't know if you need to swear me in as a witness or anything like that.
Yeah, let me go ahead and do that. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do. And just for the record, my name is Alex Lemay, work with Bowler Engineering, with office address at 30 Independence Boulevard, Suite 200. Yes, just in terms of when we expect the store to open, the goal is to go to construction, likely towards the end of the summer and have the store open by the end of the year.
Okay, and so for Lisa, is there, do we have any time constraints in voting on the, on that monument sign?
So as long as you have the public hearing open, you have no time constraints. Once you close the public hearing, you then have 62 days from the closing of the public hearing to make a decision. So if you wanted to address the other signs and leave it open to, for a month to find out whether the applicant can get on the on the multi-tenant sign, you could do that. Or if you close it, well, if you close it, you really shouldn't be taking new information in from the applicant. So if you're waiting to find out whether the applicant will be able to get on that sign, I would suggest you leave the public hearing open, whether as to that sign only or to all the other signs.
And we do, we respectfully request that the board make a decision on the, on the proposed monument sign. Just because that's our preferred sign and we would ask that the board consider it as part of our tonight's application.
Okay, very well. Christine, you have any questions?
No questions.
All right.
So what are we doing with the wall signs? There'll be two, right?
Um, there's going to be three wall signs. There's going to be two signs on the south or the front elevation, which is the golden arch and a McDonald's wordmark. And there's going to be one wall sign on the west or the non-drive-through side elevation, which is going to be a McDonald's golden arch. Which is, that's based off the county's recommendation.
I recommend, it's something recommended too.
So so the county states, we find three of the proposed wall signs to be duplicative and unnecessary. Whereas freestanding signs are used to communicate with individuals traveling through a roadway, wall signs are used by potential patrons once in the plaza. These wall signs should not be designed, sized, or located on the building to communicate with passerby number nine. The nine, non-drive-through east side and rear north elevation signs, McDonald's sign and two M logos only serve this purpose and are therefore not necessary. The proposed sign on the drive-through side, west side, could be switched to the smaller M logo, M logo, reducing sign clutter while still clearly communicating the business to potential patrons.
And in the recommendation.
As I said, the board shall only allow three wall signs on two faces, McDonald's and an M logo on the front and an M logo on the drive-through side. That's what you're agreeing to?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could just, Mr. Ingber, if you do know that if you ask the board to vote on the monument sign tonight and they decline to do so, they declined to approve it, you have a two-year wait before you can reapply for it. Where, and if the fact that whether you can or can't get on the multi-tenant sign may influence the board, you may want to have a discussion with the board before you make a final decision on that point.
Okay, all right, so if that's, if knowing that, we'll, we'll leave the record open on the mind, on the proposed monument sign.
Okay.
And we do have some renderings that we can share with the board. I know it did come up at the last hearing. And Ethan or Alex, if you want to share your screen, you could show the two new proposed monument sign renderings.
Sure, I just have the yeah, well, so the photo says.
Yeah, that's, that's the one I meant.
Okay, so let's see. We'll do this one first. Bear with me one second. This is the 3D photo simulation. This is for heading, traffic heading southbound. You can see the, the proposed monument sign here with the tree, the tree lining, the South Road here. And this is the vacant bank building with the kind of McDonald's in the background there. There's another photo saying it's a little bit further to the north, still heading southbound, a little bit further to the north, which I could share just for purposes of presenting it to the board. It looks like this. Still heading southbound, you can kind of see the vacant bank here, you see the monument sign in the distance, and McDonald's is screened by the existing tree line there along South Road.
And the applicant is willing to covenant any proposed monument sign approval on the condition that such a variance applies only to freestanding buildings within the Hudson Plaza and not to businesses within the enclosed plaza, which that was a recommendation from the Duchess County Planning Commission. So it would be conditioned on a freestanding sign only for any pad sites within Hudson Plaza.
Okay, Tony G, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony S?
No questions.
Simona? You're muted, Simone.
I don't, I don't know if you, can everyone see this? I'm not sure. This is the, like a printout I have of the signs from last meeting. Is there any way you could actually put this version up so we can see with the three signs, just to make sure I know? Okay, that's, that is what I was looking at. Okay.
So the
Thank you.
The three signs would be under where it says front elevation, we would be keeping the McDonald's wordmark as well as the golden arch.
Yep.
And on the non-drive-through side elevation, we will be proposing a golden arch. And that rear elevation sign, that's going to be not included as part of the application.
I want, I did want to clarify though, Matt, I apologize. The county's letter, the county's recommendation is that this golden arch sign, which we, we had proposed on the non-drive-through side, they had recommended be on the west elevation, which is the drive-through side facing into the shopping center.
Okay.
That was the county's recommendation. I, I would think that McDonald's would prefer to have the golden arch facing Route 9. But I, of course, I leave that up to the board. I think McDonald's is okay with having just the three signs. I would think that their preference is the McDonald's, the McDonald's logo sign facing Route 9 on the non-drive-through side versus an M logo on the drive-through side facing the, the shopping center. But Matt, I'll defer to you and the board from that perspective. I just wanted to kind of clarify that one point from the county's.
Thanks, Ethan. So for that, yeah, so as Ethan, as Alex mentioned, that is the proposed, the requested wall signs, but we are willing, if the board is inclined, we are willing to, to keep it as, as how the county recommended.
Okay, so where it says rear elevation, you would not have a logo, an M logo on that?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, I'll sketch it on the screen just so we can, we can clarify. I'll X that one out.
Okay.
We would keep these. And then this, per the county's recommendation, this one would end up, I, I don't know exactly where I would imagine it would go on the drive-through, on the, the drive-through side facade, probably between the, these two windows here.
Okay, thank you. That's very clear.
Do you have an overhead illustration of, of Route 9 and the building and where the signs would go?
I do.
Do you mind displaying that for me?
Would the, would the site plan be sufficient?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll zoom out. Sorry if I make anybody sick zooming in and out. Here's Route 9 to the bottom of the page on the east side of the building. I will now zoom in. Again, I apologize if I make anybody nauseous. I'm just going to pull up this plan so I can look at it. So we would have the M logo sign on the front facade and the wordmark sign on the front facade. See the G letter here. And the M logo would be on this side here. And then another M logo.
Can you see the cursor?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll box it in. You have like the M logo sign here. That would be the, the word sign. M logo would be on this kind of corner feature here. And on the drive, on the drive-through side, per the county's recommendation, I would anticipate M logo here. So this is the south facade. This is the south facade. This is the west facade. Front of the store on the south, drive-through side facing into the shopping center on the west.
And where do you expect most of the traffic to come in from?
I will zoom out. I anticipate the traffic will come in from South Road to the entrance that's just to the south of the building. And they, they have these two kind of entrance ways off of the shopping center's drive, driveway to enter the site. Typically, I would expect they use this, the driveway to the south here and come in, circulate into the drive-through, or they bypass the drive-through, look for a parking space and circulate back out.
And where would the monuments sign go?
We have the monument sign proposed right here.
And where is that in relation to the existing pylon signs?
There's one pylon sign at this, at this ingress driveway for South Road right here.
Right, but that's, that's not for the plaza though, right?
Yeah, it is. That's That is for the plaza. Yep.
All right.
It is. And then there's another one further up to the north that would be off of this sheet, beyond the vacant bank and further to the north by the gas station, I believe.
Okay. That's all I have. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this?
If you could stop sharing your screen for just a minute, Alex, and I can see if anyone's trying to speak on this one. You can raise your hand in Zoom or, or just unmute yourself. Not seeing any.
All right, I, I don't see anything, but tell me, how long do you think you'll need to get an answer from the property owner about the use of the pylon sign?
In additional two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Okay, so if we were going to vote on this tonight, would still adjourn it for a month, Lisa?
So if you want to vote on everything, you can
I don't think we're going to vote on everything. I think we're just
Okay, so if you want to vote on the wall signs only, I would just close the public hearing as to the wall signs and leave it open as to the monument sign, and then you can vote on the wall signs this evening.
I just want to remind everyone that there are three other variances. They're all related to the layout of the site itself. That's numbers one, two, and five. And I think we do want to vote on those as well because that would also allow these guys to get back to the planning board, which I think they would probably like to do. The signs, I don't suppose, are as much of an issue for the planning board as long as the EBA is dealing with it. But Lisa, would you agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can, can I ask a question? Is the lease, is the lease signed for this property?
Yeah.
So the lease doesn't specify that advertising can go, I mean, as far as the pylon goes, sign?
In turn, in going on to the existing freestanding sign? It was a, you know, it's a you know, it, it wasn't clear in their lease and that's, and so McDonald's Corporation reached out directly to the property owner to renegotiate to get on to the, the existing market.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then I move to close the public hearing. I had a number three, with the exception of sub three, the application for a freestanding sign. Second that. All right, any discussion on that? No, is that correct, Lisa?
And yes, I'm looking at the agenda. Yes, that's correct.
All right, then. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries, then I move to adjourn item three of, sub three of item three to the is April good enough for the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. To the April 11th meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, and I'm sorry I didn't say this in the beginning. The rest of the procedure for the applications is we take all the applications as there are on the agenda. When the public hearings are closed, after that, we'll deliberate and then vote on each of those. Any of the applicants can either wait through the, to the end of the meeting or call the zoning administrator in the morning to find out the status of their application.
Okay. Right, thank you.
So that brings us to item number four. This is a lot line revision, Sarah Bragden, Ten Cock Street. Is there someone here from, come on up? I think you're still under oath.
Okay.
All right, so what's changed?
Well, I have to, I'm applying to change the property line slightly by about, I'm sorry, I'm woefully ill-prepared. I didn't bring my plat with me, but I think it's about 1,000 feet from lot one to lot two. So in order to accommodate a little more room for the septic, so that the Board of Health can approve that. And I was previously given a variance back in January for most of the variance that was needed, and this is just an alteration of that. By about 900 feet.
So essentially, this is really correcting what was previously granted, just to comply with the actual setting of the, of the lots. Is that correct?
Yes, I had to make a modification to the property line of just a little bit. Yeah.
Okay. I don't have any questions.
No, I don't have any questions.
No questions.
No. And you'll be recusing yourself on this, you said? So Larry, any questions?
No question.
Phyllis, any questions?
No. How, how is it that you realized that you needed to come back? What?
Well, we've been back and forth with Jim Teed from the Board of Health. And in order to comply with his comments, we had to change the property line from the original plat that was submitted to him by the engineer Mark Day. So in our correspondence with Jim Teed, we realized that in order to accommodate him, we'd have to change the actual property line.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And Tony S, you'll be voting on this? Do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, and Simone, any questions?
No, no questions, no questions.
Okay, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
If you're on the Zoom, you can raise your hand in Zoom or just unmute yourself. You're on a phone, you can use star six to unmute. Not seeing anyone. All right, I'm not seeing anyone, then I'll move to close the public hearings.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one recusal. That brings us to item five. And again, you can either wait or, or find out in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
That brings us on the item five, assigned variance, Demco Properties, 531 Heat Avenue. Is there someone here from that application?
Yes, hi, this is Joyce Stanton.
Hi, Joyce, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, and what's your application?
My application is for a sign, a wall sign on the building that would act more as a directional. It's called a C21 pub. I, I think I sent a picture in of it. And it just, it's a very easy, like a mount kind of sign. It just mounted right to the wall.
Do you know how big it is?
Yeah, it's about 21 inches all the way around.
You mean in circumference or diameter?
I think diameter, just, it's just round. I'm sorry, I wish I had the picture. I have it in my phone, but I don't think I can pull it up right now. But do you see the picture that I sent in of it?
And you had that picture, yes.
Yep, okay, well, they come in 18 and 21.
Okay, and where, where would you be mounting it?
I'll be mounting it right at the top on the brick, which is close to the driveway that's there.
Okay.
We're, we're on the first floor there and it's, it's like, I look like it was a brick addition maybe, once upon a time, and right towards, right towards like almost the edge of it. Not quite the edge, but almost. There's actually, right now, there's some kind of hanging post, so I was going to kind of put it right, right, right in between the window where the windows are, or where the windows were, and the edge of the building. So right in the middle of that area. That area is probably about, oh, I want to say maybe 16 to 18 inches.
And can you tell me why you need an additional sign?
Yes, there's three lanes of traffic that comes down that road. And people don't know where we're at. We've had many people that tell us that, you know, I never even knew you was here. We've been there for 12 years. And what I do generally every year is I ask for a temporary three-month banner to go up. But we really need that sign. We really need something to let people know that we actually exist there. When Popeyes came in, it was kind of good for us because we could at least say before Popeyes. But we kind of want our own, you know, our own, you know, sign that, that actually faces the traffic, so they actually know that we're there. It's just a little small sign in century 21, rebranded about three years ago. So we kind of need something, something to show that we're there. We don't have the space to put up like a, a regular sign. Like I see everybody else around us. They have like the directional sign, Planet Wings, they have one that they have like in the ground or in the grass. But we just wanted one just mounted to our building.
All right, and tell me, will it be lit? Lighted?
Yes, it does have a lighted, it would be on a timer, so it would come on at night, maybe, you know, depending on whether it was daylight savings time or not. So probably come on like at six and then go off at six.
And is it fair to say that the existing sign that's there is not helpful to you?
You know what, it's a big sign and I appreciate the board for allowing us to have that sign, but I got to tell you the truth. Nobody sees it but the people next door. I mean, I'm sorry, the people across the street. They're the only ones that see it because other than people that maybe stop at the light, but everybody is in such a, everybody is in such a hurry. You know, that they really only see us, I think, when they stop like in front of it. You know, people are just like looking around. I think that's the only time they really see us, because I tell you, nobody really, everybody that comes in here says they didn't know we was there. Some of them don't even know where Height Avenue is. They don't realize that, you know, it's, it's an extent you're from church in Baker. They just, you know, they don't know.
And did you get a copy of the county's comments on your application?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and do you have any comments about those comments?
No, I don't think that, um, I, I don't understand why they said that because I can't see what, it would make too much of a difference for them. Because they, there's already, I, I call them directional signs that's put up from like Planet Wings, Popeyes, and other places I see there. If we had, and if we was approved for that, we could put up something like that. But we definitely need something facing the traffic, and this is like really nice and compact. I hope you have a copy of what I'm talking about, and it's such an easy mount. It's not like we have to, um, you know, go into the wall or anything like that. You just actually attach it to the brick. And the owner, Demco Properties of New York, he's okay with it. He's happy. He's hoping that this does get approved.
All right, and the county recommended that if this was granted, you remove the existing sign, that you say is not particularly helpful. Are you able to do that?
I would rather not do that one. I know I wouldn't want to I know I wouldn't want to remove the, that sign, because I just paid like a lot of money to get that refaced. Again, the Century Twenty-One just rebranded three years ago. And part of our, part of our, the process they gave us because of COVID, they told us that we could wait. But now is the time, we have to, we have to, you know, put the right face up now. No longer the little house with the Century Twenty-One with the lower letters, now it's all capital letters. And they have what they call the seal, which is a, like a, like a half a moon with a twenty-one inside.
So, but let me ask it this way. If the Board was willing to grant the new sign, under the condition that you remove the old sign, which you say is not particularly helpful, are you able to do that?
I, I'd rather not do that. I'd rather not do that, because I'm, you know, in my mind, that if you grant this other sign, it's actually like a directional sign. That's what it, that's what it is to me, it's not really like a real sign. See, Century Twenty-One, with this rebrand, they don't know about this seal. So to leave this, you know, the, to take the, the big sign down and to leave this little sign, I think we would, might, I don't, maybe, not, but I don't think people really know about it. I mean, does anybody in the Board know about the rebranding of Century Twenty-One? If you've seen that pub sign, would you know that that was a, a business? No.
I, I would assume it was a business, yeah.
Oh, okay, because I didn't know if people even knew that, you know, that, that's, that's happened, okay. But yeah, if I could, I'd rather not. I really wanted to use that pub sign as more of like a directional, like when people are coming down that highway extremely fast, that they at least see and say, okay, that's where they're at. And then look over and see the other sign, you know, too. I wouldn't want to, I really wouldn't want to take that big sign down. I was trying to have one sign up and the other really, I was really, I swear, to me, that pub sign would be like a directional sign. Just something, almost like a landmark, okay, there they are. Because people really don't even know we're there.
Alright, that's, I have Christine.
Well, would you be willing to have the, the, the big sign that you have on the building right now that really can't be seen by anybody, would you be willing to make that smaller? So that you don't have that big sign plus the second sign that's projecting?
You know, that would probably cost a lot. I, I, again, I just, I just paid to get that refaced. I actually have it, I just haven't put it up yet because of the weather. So I have like the new face, because, you know, Century Twenty-One has, you know, requirements. And, you know, they gave us like three years, two or three years to change the sign. So I just ordered that, that front sign. I mean, I'm not going to say that nobody sees the sign. I'm gonna, what I'm saying is that when the traffic is coming down, and there's three lanes of it, and I mean, these people are going fast. Nobody looks over, nobody has time to. They might look over to like maybe pass somebody or move into another lane. But I think, I know the only people that see that bigger sign is the ones that actually stop. And that light doesn't stay green very long. It stays green, I think, about maybe, I don't know, five seconds? Maybe seven, and then it changes and the people start speeding by again. So, I don't know, I, I, I thought that if they seen that pub sign, because it'd be sticking out a little bit, and it'd be lit at night, even though we're not in the office at night. But through the daytime, I, I should just keep with that, through the daytime, I would, I would think that that would be like a, like a directional sign. Something we can say that is, is, you know, it kind of directs people into us. And I was hoping that the other sign could actually be our, you know, our, our sign. Funny as that might sound, I don't know how to say this, but I was thinking more of the pub as like more directional sign. Like a parking in the back sign, almost like, but this is, this is just saying that we exist.
Our code about lighting, does it, does the lighting have to go off when the business is closed? Or is it just eleven o'clock? Or the, when the business is closed, whichever's later?
You're asking me, I'm sorry, are you asking?
I'm asking our zoning administrator about, I don't want you to think that you can leave the light on when the office is closed if our code prohibits that.
I don't know.
I don't remember whether it was. I, yes, I know.
Do it all the time, but you know what I mean, but I don't want to tell on anyone, but I'm just saying, I do see people do that.
As I recall, this was a business closed at, at.
Yeah, but I can't remember whether it's, whichever's later, so if the business closed after eleven, they could still have the lights on.
Right.
Right, but if she closes at six PM, she can have.
Lights on.
Until eleven. I think that's, I just, I couldn't remember. While she's looking up, Tony, do you, do you, do you, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Flew right by me, nice.
Yeah.
On the west side of the building, as you're approaching the building, where you have your banner. That, that, you couldn't put a little sign there? On that wall, or is that not allowed?
Um, no, you know, there's a bush there. There's a bush there and you can't really see nothing. Do you notice how big that banner is?
Oh, yeah.
You know, that banner that you was allowing me to put up is, is I think it's three by nine feet?
It's a big banner.
Three by six.
It's a big banner, isn't it?
Yeah, and I have, and I, yes, and I have to do that, because I'm telling you, when the people come down that road, they don't see nothing. When they stop, every now and then we get a call from, you know, the sign, which is great. But I was, I was trying to do something where we wouldn't have to keep putting that up. Just something that we can put up that kind of acts as a directional, so when they look up and see that little pub sign, that pub sign, that they know that it's us. Do you see how big I had to make that sign? That's how big I had to make, I couldn't even put a little sign up there, like a little yard sign. Nobody would see it, them people go fast. I mean, it's like three lanes of traffic, and they're, they're really moving quick. I myself do, within the speed limit.
Of course. Don't worry about.
Speed limit, okay? Yeah, but you know, some people don't, you know what I mean? People, some people drive very crazy, and we kind of witnessed quite a bit of that, being there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you purchase the sign already?
I, no, I didn't. No, I didn't purchase the pub sign.
Okay. Tony? I don't have any questions. Diane?
The only thing, was it the, the brackets that are presently over, that you mentioned, that are over the present Century Twenty-One sign? They'll be removed?
I don't know what you mean by the bracket.
You mentioned the brackets that would be above where you want to put the pub sign. That are, I see sticking out of the, the soffit there, or the freezer, whatever.
Oh, oh, yes, you talk about where, I think Houlihan and Lawrence was there. You're talking about where that little thing is hanging out?
Yes, that'll be going.
Yes, we'll have to, yes. If the town requires that, yes. We could take it down, because we do want ours to be seen, and we have to put it up high enough so people don't bother it. You know, we've run into a problem there in the past year. Excuse me?
Or?
Oh, we ran.
Or whenever it goes.
We ran into a.
Or just eleven?
Um, well, it says eleven.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it would be right between the, the, where the glass was, where the wood's at now, and the edge of the building, be right in the middle, but up at the top. But we ran into a problem recently with, I don't even know if it's still called Days Inn, where we, it seems like with COVID, and I understand everybody have to make money. But they took in a lot of social service people. So I've already had somebody steal out my car, you know, stuff. And I just seen a guy, actually two days ago, that was looking in the car. And one of the agents happened to pull up, and he was like looking in my car, you know. So we've got a little problem there with certain things. I mean, if I had my way, I would probably try to bring that down a little bit, but I'm afraid, I don't know, it's, it's just kind of a little bad element lately in that neighborhood. But, um, um, I can be okay with it, because I think I can handle it. I just really wanted direction for the traffic. I'm not worried about the people from the hotel there, as far as breaking into our office. That they don't do, but they do, you know, come around and start looking in the back, because the back of that building is very hidden, hidden. So, you know, you just always, you always come in and find something back there, especially in the summertime, that's not really very pleasing. But, um, I'm, again, I'm not worried about them coming in, but I do need, if, if this is approved, I would need that sign high. High, high, right up there, kind of towards the top, and in the middle between the window and the edge of the building.
Anything else, Diane?
No, no, that's fine.
Alright, Larry?
Is the sign primarily to attract new customers? Or is it people who already have arrangements to come in and see you?
The sign is there for both, but mainly for people just to know that we exist. I got to tell you that this business is, this is our forty-sixth year. I've been with the company for twenty-one years, and I brought the business twelve years ago. I moved it from the town of La Grange into Poughkeepsie, into that spot it's at now, because it had a sidewalk. And for me, I needed a sidewalk, so I wanted to have a kind of, I wanted to be in the town of Poughkeepsie, but kind of what maybe like a little city feel, feel. Because, so that's why I really wanted that sidewalk, and it was perfect, because it had the parking in the back. The problem with that location, though, is that unless they let you erect a sign up that people can actually see, because it's so much traffic that comes. I mean, it's non-stop, it seems like. I mean, and you know, we miss a lot of business from people, because they don't even know we're there. They just keep driving, you know, they don't know. And, you know, to me, the market is pretty decent now, I'm sure it's going to change this year, though. Positive it is, because I see the foreclosure's coming out a little bit. But, you know, we just really want to be seen, and that's, that was, that's the purpose. That, that really is the purpose of that sign. It's, I, I know that everyone's saying it is a second sign, yes, yes. Actually, it, it technically, it is a second sign, but for us, it would just be like a directional, like, you know, here we are, you know. Because something to, just something that people know that we were there.
Anything else, Larry?
No.
Phyllis?
Um, the temporary banner sign, is that going? What's happening to that one?
Definitely, yeah, we don't want that, we don't want that at all. We never did want it, be honest with you, but we had to do something to, so people would know, you know, that we exist. Because it's, it's really sad, though, to have a business on such a busy highway. And I do notice the other people, they do, not everyone, but some of them, most of them have, you know, they have like that little thing up. It looks like it's, oh, I don't know, maybe three feet by two or something? Or three feet by one foot, they, they have like this, this little sign up sticking in the ground. Like, it's, it looks to me like it's a directional sign. And it kind of points people in. And, and that's nice, and then they're also well-lit. Popeyes is very well-lit at night. And then I think they also have, I think, lights, I'm not sure if there's lights in that parking lot, but, that parking area, but. Yeah, that banner would definitely go.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be more than happy to unroll that one, I mean, roll that one up and save it for something else, maybe. Thank you.
Alright, Tony? Tony, I can't hear you.
You looking for me, Paul, or?
Tony, yes, sorry.
Yeah, okay. No, I have no further questions.
And Simone?
I have no further questions.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application? Anyone on Zoom or on the phone?
Not seeing any. I did just see that Lisa, you added some language in the chat for the zoning regulations, thank you. Just noticed that. Not seeing anybody else.
Alright. In that case, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That brings us to, and then, Ms. Diane, you can either wait till the end of the meeting or find out tomorrow from the zoning administrator. Next is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is item number six, twelve fourteen Duchess Turnpike, it's an application for second-story addition. Is there anyone here from that application? I'm not hearing or seeing anyone responding to that, so we'll come back to that one. That brings us to item number seven. Horizon Wireless. Is there someone here from that application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Scott Olson from Young Summer.
How are you tonight?
I'm well, thank you, how are you?
I'm good.
Great.
Actually, I'm going to change the rules about lawyers having to be sworn in, so go ahead.
Okay. So, we're here tonight for a different project than that for which we were here a few months ago. And this is what we call the Winslow Gate Small Cell Facility. And it's essentially like the other facility, a small cell facility, which is different than your traditional macro facility. This one is a little different than the other one, though, because we couldn't put the antenna on the roof of a building. So we're proposing to install a forty-foot tower slash antenna in the parking lot of the existing Shoprite Shopping Center at ten Winslow Gate Road. And very similar to the other projects that we've had before you, essentially, this is driven by a lack of capacity in the town. This is a very busy area. The closest site that we have right now is the Marist College Tower that we have, and it's only three quarters of a mile away. But because of the capacity issues that we're facing, we still need a new site at this location. We've provided kind of the typical information that we've provided in the past to you. We've given you the site plans, the radio frequency analysis, we've given you a site selection analysis. We've provided in Exhibit Six, an analysis by our engineer, who certifies that the emissions will be entirely consistent and conform to the FCC emission requirements. So it will be safe. And in terms of visibility, we've provided in Exhibit Five, a brief analysis that shows you that because we're keeping this to forty feet, it's pretty much only going to be visible from the property upon which we're proposing to locate it. And that, in a nutshell, is what we're looking to do.
Okay, and similar to earlier applications, I think we're going to have our own expert review your submissions.
That's, that's my understanding, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So any questions for anybody on the Board?
I have, see, I have one. This is just to, will this increase the signal strength at all in that area? Because I know I live up that way, and a lot of my neighbors have real problems getting the Marist antenna.
Yeah, yeah, so that, it will increase the signal strength. It's clearly, it's definitely a capacity-driven, but we are also including, we're going to propagate in the seven hundred megahertz and the twenty-one megahertz signal. And it's going to add additional signal strength to that area.
So it'll benefit the neighborhood, and again, in that way, that we'll be able to have better access to the cell network.
That's, that's the intention, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, anyone else from the Board? Have any questions?
I just had two questions. One, can you just clarify whether it's going to be steel or wood? Because I've seen a reference in your application to both.
And, and my apologies, and Nate Keating is with us, but I believe it's a steel structure. And I have a feeling that I may have said it was wood. And I have a feeling that I may have said it was wooden in my narrative. I apologize. Typically, well, we've done a lot of wooden poles in the past, but I think because of the nature of the shopping center, the existing light poles, it made more sense to use steel in this case, to try to make it look, fit in better.
Okay, and, and is there any way, in, in like one minute, you could just make the, the layperson really understand why? Why can't there be an increase on the Marist pole?
Okay, so it quickly as possible, and I think we have our RF engineer here, but I will just jump in and say, because each site basically has a finite capacity limit. And so it, it, it has to do with the number of channels that are involved with each site, and each channel can only accommodate X number of users. I, I, I don't know the specific number, but once you start to exceed that, so I'll give it as an example. Let's say the number's three thousand people at one time. I'm not saying that's the number, but just use that. If all of a sudden we have, you know, the college folks and then, and then people using it in the shopping center in that area, you know, six thousand. The capacity, the capacity is so overblown that the site simply will not allow people to access the, the network. It'll drop calls because they can only handle that three thousand or so. I don't know if that is responsive to your question.
Okay, so it's, it's not distance, it's density.
Exactly. So many people are using these networks now. You know, some of them have multiple devices. And it's just, it's a law of physics. We can only, each site can only handle so many connections.
And it can't go on state property.
Um, this was, this was the most, this was the best property that we identified. So I'm not sure what state property.
Or county, whatever. There's so much of it there. Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's all.
Okay.
All right, anyone else from the board? Any questions? All right, anyone from the public who wishes to comment on, on this application?
Yes, I do.
I do. This is Michelle.
Michelle, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Oh, yes.
All right, go ahead.
Great. First of all, there were no meeting or there was no notes about where this location would be that Verizon, Mr. Olson's talking about. So that's a problem for the community. You're not letting us know where these antennas are being placed. So I have several times on this subject through town board, zoning board, planning board. In the planning board meeting of February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, the Verizon engineer, Ron Evans, confirmed that the antenna proposed for the other site on Raymond Avenue would be licensed for between seven hundred and nineteen hundred megahertz, also twenty-one thousand megahertz, not twenty-one megahertz as Scott had misspoken. And also a frequency band of thirty-five fifty to thirty-seven hundred megahertz. Now, um, they, they confirmed, Scott Olson confirmed to, to Carl Whitehead, the planning chair at the time, that this was not five G, but five G is thirty-five fifty to thirty-seven hundred megahertz. So there's a problem there. And so when you're getting information, you need to be really careful about what's noted. And in addition, the overarching issue is your perception, or the perception at, at that point of the planning board, that our hands are tied. Now, Woodstock doesn't have tied hands. They wrote ordinances that I actually shared with our zoning board. So this does apply to this application as well. What I received from the zoning board was crickets. We are permitted to have town code. And zoning board members, we demand specific ordinances written for us. And I've mentioned several professionals who are highly adept at doing this. Mister, um, Mike Musso is not. I've never seen any ordinances that he's ever written. You know, if I'm mistaken, please correct me. So he won't be useful to us. I used to canoe down the Delaware River through some major rapids. You know, they were called Skinner's Falls at the time. And it's closed now due to deaths on the river. There were several of them. So it's kind of like without ordinances specifically written for us, it's like, it's like sitting on a raft, going down the Colorado, relying on a river guide that has no paddle. And then you have some, let's say carnivorous, you know, carnivorous river creatures who know what's up. So we are a target here in Poughkeepsie. And I do appreciate number nine, where you actually are mentioning that uh, you're, there's a consideration of a resolution authorizing the retention of an RF export, uh, expert, I'm sorry, for all wireless telecom applications. That's wonderful. But if we do not have town ordinances that are precise and written, you know, exclusively for us, that will help define what is allowed to come in and what is not, we, it, it's like that, that Colorado River metaphor that I mentioned. You can't do this. You just can't do this to Mister Mike Musso. If you don't have ordinances, it's just like going down the river naked and without a paddle. And if you want to be tossed around into the rocks in this analogy, I don't want to be on board, and no towns person here in Poughkeepsie wants to be on that raft. So please get some paddles. Call me up if you don't know who to go to. I'll just offer some suggestions. But you can't, you can't put somebody in that boat without a paddle. And that's what you're having Mister Musso do. All right, so please write some ordinances and have it be, have that effort be led by someone who knows what they're talking about and has done it successfully for other, other towns. Successfully meaning protecting the residents from over, overdeployment. And it's going to go on. We are.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to.
We are vulnerable, and they know it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would point out that we don't write the town code, but is there anyone else who wants to comment on this? Let's. Regarding an application for a tower, yes. Sure, come on up.
I do, Carlo Mazarelli, live on twelve Jonathan Lane. Mister Mazarelli, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge? I do. Yeah. So I'm a local architect. I know a little bit about these five G stuff. I'm not an expert for sure, but I can certainly tell you that this application is something to be taken very seriously. I mean, you have to. Some people are under the impression that if you can't see it, you can't touch it, you can't feel it, it can do no harm. And that's the, the wrong impression. Again, I don't know much about it. I'm not an expert, but I do believe that this board has the obligation for our town to make this decision based on knowledge, an informed decision. And if you don't have the expertise to do that, maybe you should delay this application. Again, I'm sure the applicants, experts came and presented a wonderful case before you, but do we have the ability to really review that application in certain detail that, that we really expect to do for our, our town here? Once it's, once it's approved, there's no going back, is my, is my guess. Once you give them the okay, they're not gonna take it down, right? So um, listen, if they have to wait another month and you need some more people to look into it, I think it'd be prudent for the board to do that. That's just my two cents.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment on this? Okay. Mister Olson or the, anyone from the applicant want to comment on anything that's been said?
Just to throw out there, when people throw the five G phrase out there, I'm, I'm not quite sure that people really understand what that means. What it really means is the fifth generation. What it means by some people who are afraid of five G, though, is not what we're proposing to do here. So five G, in terms of what people are, are talking about on the internet, it relates to what they, it's a, it's a milliwatt type of, it's a much different frequency is what it is. It's a very high frequency. It's like twenty-five thousand, something like that. That's not what we're doing here. Regardless, no local town has a right to regulate the type of service that's provided. That's the FCC's requirement, but again, we're, we're not doing what's being proposed. There, there are people that just seem to be afraid of it for some reason, but there's, there's, there's really no reason to be. But again, so if someone says, hey, this is a five G tower, well, no, it's not a five G tower if you understand what five G truly is, so.
Okay, well, I think the intent of the board is to hire an expert to review your application and all, all the documents that you submitted. Is that, is that everyone's feelings?
Yes.
Okay, then I, I'm gonna move to adjourn the application to next month. All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you. We'll see you next month.
Okay. Let's see. I'm gonna have a second call for item number six, twelve fourteen Duchess Turnpike. Anyone here for that application? I don't see or hear anyone, so we'll go to item number eight. This is Lisa and Bruce Peters, twenty-four Marwood Drive. Is there anyone here for that application?
Yes, I am. Lisa Peters.
Lisa, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
All right, why don't you describe your application?
I'm looking for a front and a side variance for a front porch with a roof.
Okay, and you've submitted some drawings?
Yes, I did.
And is it fair to say that the, the porch is not gonna extend any further than the side of the house now?
No, it's not.
Okay. And about how far in front of the house? Well, what's the width of the porch?
Eight feet.
All right, I don't have any questions. Christine?
No questions.
Art?
No, it looks like it's gonna be similar to other porches in the neighborhood. Good with it.
Tony, chief?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions. I, I actually did look at, I mean, the entire neighborhood. There, there's only one other porch that's done this, and it, it's a great idea. It looked, it's around the corner from you and it's an excellent idea.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Larry?
No question.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Tony, yes?
Uh, no questions.
Uh, Simona?
No questions.
All right, is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this application?
You're on the Zoom, you can raise your hand or just unmute yourself.
All right, I'm not hearing or seeing anything, therefore I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any, are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. All right, and for other businesses, we do that now or at, at the end of the meeting? Does it make any difference, Lisa?
It doesn't make any difference, and I'd probably do it at the end in case people are waiting for their decisions.
All right.
But that's, it doesn't make a difference procedurally, whichever you prefer.
So let's see. I'm gonna recall once again, twelve fourteen Duchess Turnpike. Is there anyone here from that application? All right, then I move to adjourn that to the April eleventh meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Can someone reach out to the applicant and make sure that they appear? Okay, okay. Then all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then motion carries. All right, so let's see. Can you, can you tell who's here?
Yeah, it looks like. Actually. I'm not sure. Nancy was here for. Stephanie, the last one was the only person I think who's on.
Is she? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well then, let's do a. Which one was Stephanie?
Stephanie, I think, was Lisa's.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll do number eight. Anybody having concerns about this one? All right, then let me offer these findings. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of the variance. It seems, this application seems to be similar to other properties in the neighborhood. It's consistent with the nature of the neighborhood, and I don't see that there'll be any impact there. Whether the benefit can be sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than area variance, based upon the location of the house and the size of the lot. And this, there's no other way besides an area variance to accomplish the applicant's request. Whether requested area variance is substantial, perhaps numerically, but since the porch does not extend past the house or encroach on the side lot line, anything, any more than the house does. And I think that the encroachment into the front is de minimis. I don't believe that is substantial. Whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect on the impact or physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence before us that there'll be any physical or environmental impact from this. And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the board, but shall not necessarily accrue the granting of the area variance, this quite clearly is self-created. However, that is not a reason to deny the application, and I would offer those findings. Christine?
Sure. I move that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Any conditions you want to? Then all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. That's adjourned, that's adjourned. So let's do number five, five thirty-one Feet Avenue. So the county said this was a matter of local concern, but made some comments based upon the, the testimony of the applicant, that the existing sign doesn't do much good. She also made a point, though, although she kept referring to this as a directional sign, I think, I think it's more correctly noted as something just to catch your attention. It's not really a directional sign, but it, it has, it catches your attention. Originally, I, I think I would have agreed with the county about their proposal, but I, I don't know that the new sign offers enough information to the, to the public to, to offer what the applicant's looking for. That's my thought. So I, I would be for granting the variance and not making a remove that sign. Now I was saying the fact that I voted against the sign in the first place and I still don't think it's, it's necessary. I think the fact of taking it down, that doesn't really help her and doesn't really change much. That's what I I'm happy to hear contrary opinions though.
No, I do think that the sign that she'd like to put up, it's simple enough and it's, it, I understand that it's their new branding and maybe everybody doesn't know that's Century 21, but I know from, I'm very familiar with that building and you really don't know what it is when you're driving by. So I think it would be helpful. I think it's unobtrusive enough that it's gonna be alright.
Yeah, my turn?
Yeah.
I agree. I think, I think, well, I'm lucky, at first I thought, nah, I don't really like this, but it is gonna be small. Without her white banner now, you really don't know if she's even there. That's very, we knew that when we gave her the permission for the sign she has now. I don't think there's gonna be any impact to the area. It might help her.
Tony G?
I agree. I don't see an issue with it as long as, I don't know if it'd be a special condition that, that banner sign doesn't exist anymore or if not.
You know, that's my thought too, but if in fact this doesn't help her in her business, I, I don't want to see her business fail just because she can't get a temporary sign, but that's up to the zoning administrator. What, I don't, I don't know if I want to make that a new issue.
That's a very fair point.
The temporary sign is only good for 90 days.
Yeah.
In the whole year.
Diane?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a good move. And if you look next door at the, I mean, they have a monument sign and a sign on the building, so it's really not adding up to more than that. Because she can't put up a monument sign, so no problem with it.
And are there some sign regulations about the height and stuff that she'll have to comply with?
For that sign.
E R Phil, E R. Is it gonna be about the same height as the old it's a hookah place or whatever they call it. It used to be the fish. Isn't that about the same height as that sign is now?
Probably.
That's pretty high off the street.
Yeah. Okay.
And again, I think the positive part about that is yep, smack it, knock it down. I think that's a plus. The one thing I would like to try to do, Paul, is have her set the timer to agree with the code related signs.
Yeah. I think that's fine. Larry? Larry, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. Phyllis?
Um, no, I think it's, I think it's fine. I think it's a hard place to have that kind of a business. And I think a lot of people probably just plug it into their GPS, but I, I, I like the new little sign. I think it's kinda cute. That was it.
Okay. Ben?
I think you could still use the staff report. I mean, I, I did raise the question in number two about whether the alternative should be considered, but you've considered it and I think for the reasons that, you know, we'll discuss. Probably
Okay.
Just fill in that one.
In that case, before we vote, I moved that the ZBA determined that this is an unlisted action appropriate for uncoordinated review and declare itself to be the lead agency.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And I moved that the ZBA determined that the action will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment. The reason set forth in the determination of non-significance for this action. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Um, then Art, do you mind making this motion?
I moved that the board approved the request for an area variance set forth on item five. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site visits by board members. Approving this variance, the board adopts the findings those set forth by the chair. You have no, other than the light being off.
Why don't you make that a condition that the applicant?
I would like to condition it that the applicant sets her timer to turn this light off at whatever 11 o'clock in the evening. To provide for the town ordinance.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? Alright, then all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. And I think that brings us to item number four. Uh, this is 10 Cockland Street. Uh, there's a lot line revision requiring area variances 6,212.38 square feet at a variance for lot two requiring a variance of 14,931.76 square feet and 30 foot, I'm sorry. A nine foot variance for the for the front yard for the property.
We have a draft resolution that Lisa prepared.
Yes. And so they still have to make findings or is this?
No, you can use the findings that are in the draft resolution.
Tony G, do you mind making a?
So you would just need to vote to approve the variance request in accordance with the draft resolution and the findings set forth therein.
Okay. Want to do that? Actually, I'll do that. I move, I move to accept the findings in the draft resolution and the variances set forth so far, set forth in there under item number five. I'm sorry, four. As outlined in the draft resolution.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, and so there's one recusal. All those other, all, everyone else in favor signify by aye.
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 And any opposed? Then that motion carries. And that brings us, I think, to item nine for other business on the agenda, consideration of a resolution authorized.
McDonald's, number three.
Oh, yeah. Okay, it was part of it.
Yeah, yeah. So we adjourned, just the, the monument sign, I want to sign one, but
He said, certainly, shortly, the thing it says.
Thank you so
Let me, I muted.
So, the staff report.
Yeah, so this, in the staff report, it basically said that items one, two, and five were all fine. And for the wall signs, basically you said that, you know, the number of wall signs they originally proposed was probably not necessary. They have since reduced the number of signs as we talked about based on the county recommendation, right? So I think the, you could use the findings in the staff report. I believe. Lisa, would you agree?
I, I would. We can use them as amended during the meeting and consistent with the application, the applicant's amendment to the their request on those points. And I think also since they're agreeing with the county's recommendation, then we don't technically need a super majority in order to do this grant, if the board were inclined to grant the variance as to the signs.
And the EAF, are we doing that for the signs or for the monument sign or for?
The planning board was lead agency and already issued an egg deck on January 20th.
Oh, okay, that's, that's what, that's what this one is.
That's where it is, yeah.
Okay. Alright, now, ready to do this one? Three, three, so one, two, four, five. Subject to the counties. Consistent with the county's recommendations.
The motion to approve the area variance request, I moved that the board approved the request for area variance set forth. This decision was based on a review of the application, testimony from the applicant, testimony offered in public hearing and results from site visits by board members. In a full variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
No, but I think the Consistent with the county's
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Then that motion carries. Okay, I think that brings us to item number nine, consideration of a resolution authorizing intention of an RF expert for all wireless telecommunications applications. So I, I think there's a recommendation.
Lisa, you had drafted something, right?
Yes, I was just about to say I have a copy that I, I can share a screen if that would be helpful.
Look, since I can't find the copy, they print it out.
Basically what I was proposing is the telecommunications, the board is familiar with the shot clock and it is ridiculously short for small cell applications. They're depending on certain nuances. They're supposed to be approved within 60 to 90 days from when the application is received by the board. It's not the date of when the application is actually the first time you hear it, like tonight. For the current application, for example, it would have been when it was submitted, which was about three weeks ago. So by the time you're seeing it for the first time, in order to authorize an expert, we've already lost three weeks of the very short shot clock. So what I'm proposing in this is to have the board do a global resolution to authorize the retention of an expert because we know we're going to want one for every application of this type going forward. And in particular, I haven't put in any specific engineer or anything in this instance, so that in case Mr. Musso's firm had a conflict or weren't able to serve for some reason, or we had applications where we needed additional vendors to come in, experts and help the board, we would be able to do that. So I left it open in that way and to, to respond. This, let's see, if we hit share, it actually works, right? Can you see my screen now?
Now we can, yep.
So basically that's, this is the resolution I had drafted and it basically just talks about the shot clock. The specific resolution is that the ZBA would authorize the retention of a telecommunications/RF expert for any application that is seeking permission to install new wireless communication facilities in the town, including but not limited to new antennas and/or towers. And of course, we still have to go through the town board approving of the expert, but that's what the, the motion is.
And as, uh, to follow up on that, the town board has authorized us to use HDR, like, like Musso's firm. Um, and we do have in our, in your packet, a, a, you know, what they call a task order, which basically for a review of this particular project. He gave us an estimate for what that would cost and that would be what we, you know, be the basis of the review for this project. But in the future, we could have others, as Lisa said, if for some reason HDR is conflicted, we could have the town board authorize another firm to work with us, but like this, the ZBA is saying that you want us to bring on that expertise each time we have one of these applications.
And tell me this, that this expense is borne by the applicant?
It is. Yep, it is. It's done by underestimating.
Okay, and do we have to vote on this or just discuss it?
So my preference would be to have the board actually vote on this resolution to authorize a, the, an expert for all telecom applications going forward. And I think if you haven't yet, you need to do it for this particular application that's before you as well.
So if I just make a motion to accept the resolution?
That would be fine.
And I make that motion?
Second.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed to this app, to this motion? Then all those, then, then it carries. Okay, and then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second minute.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Uh, then that motion carries and we're adjourned. See you next month.
Thank you all.
You well.